Let me just see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome, especially welcome to the Doylestown Township Police Department, which looks like it's in force here tonight. And while I have you, let me make, let me move an announcement up. We have our golf outing coming up on Monday, June 3rd. So everyone, two or three teams right here. It all goes, all the proceeds go to our park system, so feel free. Good thing. We know you can afford it. I'm kidding. I know you can't. We'll subsidize anyone who can't. So please do join, and please come along, and you'll have a good time. I promise you, we'll have fun. All right. Now that we're through that announcement, and you're gonna hear it again, by the way, everybody else who's still here. We have a special, and this is why the place is here, we have a special appointment to Officer Dan Carr, who went through the rigors of our interview process and background checks, and Chief has an announcement.
Yes. In the Board of Supervisors packet, there's a letter requesting the appointment of a new police officer. In January 2019, the department initiated a hiring process to fill two vacancies within the department. Mr. Daniel R. Carr was one of a large pool of applicants, and Dan has successfully completed all phases of a rigorous testing process that included oral boards, background investigations, medical, psychological, and polygraph exams. Dan's 28 years old and currently lives in Philadelphia with his wife Courtney and three children, Carly, David, and Emily. They have plans to move to the Quakertown area in the next couple of weeks when they settle in their new home. After graduating high school in 2008, Dan joined the United States Marine Corps, where he served on active duty until 2013. He was hired by the Philadelphia Police Department in September 2014, where he served as a sworn officer up until the present time. I believe that Dan's demeanor, attitude, and experience will be an asset to the Doylestown Township Police Department and to the residents we serve, and would ask that the board appoint Mr. Carr and allow Judge Maggie Snow to conduct a swearing-in this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Officer Carr, I mean, Dan Carr, soon-to-be Officer Carr, would you please-
Soon-to-be.
-go to the podium, and any of your family members who would like to go with you, especially someone who's gonna hold the Bible for you?
So your people can see it.
There you go.
Can you please identify yourselves for the record?
I'm Sherry Dance.
Thank you.
All right, please, and other members, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Daniel R. Carr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Sowmely swear.
That you will support, obey, and defend-
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States-
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania-
Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the ordinances of Doylestown Township against all enemies.
The ordinances of Doylestown Township against all enemies.
Foreigner, domestic-
Foreigner, domestic.
And that you will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and enforce the law-
To the same and enforce the law.
Without consideration to a person's-
Without consideration to a person's-
Race-
Race.
Color-
Color.
Sex, religious creed-
Sex, religious creed.
Sexual orientation, age-
Sexual orientation, age.
National origin ancestry-
National origin or ancestry.
Handicap or disability-
Handicap or disability.
And do you, Daniel Carr, further solemnly swear or affirm-
Swear.
That you will take this obligation freely-
That I will take this obligation freely.
And do it without mental reservation or purpose of evasion-
Without mental reservation.
You are a Marine. You don't have any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that you will well and faithfully-
And that I will well and faithfully-
Discharge your duties as a police officer with fidelity.
Discharge my duties as a police officer with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Officer Carr, I think it's a testament to the professionalism and the camaraderie of the department you just got sworn into, so we welcome you, and we wish you best, you know, all the best in your new home here in Doylestown Township.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dan, why don't you take a moment and introduce the rest of your family that may be here.
My mom, Meg. My dad, Scott.
Stand up. Everyone stand up.
My wife, Courtney. My youngest daughter, Emily.
Oh, jeez.
My son, Dan. My oldest daughter, Kaylee. Next to her is my niece, Carly. My aunt Deb. Brian Kennedy are my nieces and nephews. My nephew, Adrian.
Stan.
My brother-in-law, Dan.
My sister, Ann.
Right there.
My sister, Marcy.
My cousin, Steve.
My grandparents, Bill and Sandy Sherry.
And then Matt and Aaron, Matt with my partner in Philadelphia.
And this is Jan and Kevin Dietz, our family friends. And then, yeah, my in-laws are in it. My half and then my night.
Only macro, that's like half a word.
And to the Carr family, this is where the brothers and sisters that he'll be working with, and they will take care of him, trust you, they will train him, and they will make him the best in Doylestown Township. Jeff Snow, thank you.
And we promise it won't always be in this building. See ya. Thanks, Justice Snow. All right. We'll just take a few minutes and let the crowd disperse, but you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We'll be talking about your pensions next.
I think the 39th district. That's the northeast part of it. It's a section.
I knew it.
How did you know?
I don't know. Kind of. Yeah, kind of.
Way left.
Ways and Means Pension.
Here we go.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't need one. I'm good.
Hey, Deb.
Thank you.
I didn't answer.
Family, I'm right.
Do we have more announcements first? No.
Uh, no.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is a presentation about our pension, and then a presentation from the Pension Advisory Committee.
And then Ways and Means.
And then a presentation from the Ways and Means Committee. So I guess Ms. Brady's up.
Yep.
You're gonna have to go. Why don't you go up to the microphone? Because you're on TV, so you gotta be on the microphone. Oh, yeah, this is new for you. You're not usually on television when we do this.
No, I like it. So they look like a goofball. I should do something with my hair.
All right. Thank you for being here, Ms. Brady.
You're welcome. So we go to the right-hand side of the portfolio. We'll start with the Uniform Pension Plan. What I did this time was add some of the reports that I thought that the committee liked when we were doing the last meeting, so if you wanna change anything around, you have to let me know. So if we go to page two, this is a nice way of seeing it all in one page of what you have in domestic equity, so you can see what you've got in the S&amp;P 500 Growth, the S&amp;P 500 ETF, and I don't need to read it to you, but you'll see you have about 45% is in the domestic equity side of the portfolio. International has about 20%, and then in fixed income, you're carrying around 33%. Around 2% is in cash, because we do have a lot of distributions, and that makes up the portfolio. If you look at page three, that shows you that we're within the fiduciary responsibilities of the portfolio, meaning that we're in a target range right now of right within the 43.5% is in the domestic equity, and we're in the range of 40 to 50 that we can go in. Actually, at current, it's almost 45%. So you can see that we're all within the ranges of where we should be. And we're carrying 65 equity, 35% bond overall. So if you now go over to the next page, and it's marked one of eight, that's what happened last year, and I'm gonna break it out for you. Last year, the portfolio was actually down 6.15%. What we saw happening is contributions minus withdrawals came in at about $142,000. We had realized gains and losses, so our realized gains were about $44,000, but the market dropped, as we all know, starting October 3rd, and it dropped very dramatically up until Christmas Eve of last year. And with that, we saw an unrealized loss by year-end of about $1,011,000. We did have dividends and capital gains come in of close to $330,000, and then the management fees were about $57,000, and we ended up with a net loss of about $695,000. The good news is the market recovered very strongly, so within five months of a dropping starting, like I said, around the beginning of October, until now, we're seeing it's up $877,814, so we've recovered everything. We're up 8.18. I just wish that it had happened in the middle of the year, when we could have had it, could have happened all within the course of the year as opposed to at year-end.
What difference would that have made? I mean-
It would have made a big difference in what you'd have seen for your ending balance, so we'll see intra-year declines, and we've had them before. We had them in '17, where it dropped in the middle of the year and came back very strongly by the end of the year. So your big thing is if we look at last year, I mean, '17, we came at 15.88%, so we were close to meeting that 8% that we need each year for two years, so if this year would have come in at least flat, we'd have been okay. So it was just that the timing of when it happened, and as we all know, there are three major things that happened. One was Chinese tariffs were being put on. The Fed was talking about doing a more aggressive raising of interest rates, and lastly, we had the government shutdown. All of those just affected the market right at year-end. But like I said, it started to turn on December 24th. The next page just shows you in another way the portfolio breakout. It's a 65-35, and it just breaks it on the right-hand corner. It was just another, I'm just trying to bring in different reports that I thought that the group might like to see. The next group is, to me, where the real meat of what happened last year. Now, keep in mind, this shows your performance by security, what happened all of 2018, so you can see where the weaknesses and the strengths were. What would be very helpful to you, if you look at the very next chart, and you hold these two together, it reads 2018 Market Index Performance. This is what the actual indexes did. Now, keep in mind, you guys own the indexes, so you are in indexes already. The only difference of your performance would be money coming in during the course of the year or money going out, so it's the flow of money that has an effect on it, but you own the indexes. So it's a good example, if you look at what happened on the S&amp;P 500 last year, it was actually down negative 4.38%, but you guys, when you look at performance by security, you were actually only down 1.22% on the large-cap blend, which is what you benched against the S&amp;P 500. Those are two indexes that you have. When we go down each one of these, you'll see that your timing of coming in, and we know that we started to start sending in money on a regular basis as opposed to having it all come in at once a year, it gave you some positive, where you, it actually made good for you to do that, but this year, because of the toughness that happened during the course of the year, it actually hurt us in a couple places. For example, on the large-cap value, you were down 9.38, the actual index. If we had started at the year and put nothing in or taken nothing out, we had been down 8.95%. So, but once again, you're in an index. You're not in an actively managed portfolio, but yet it helped in the large growth, because large growth, you're positive .99, where that index was negative .01. So I don't want to read each one of these to you, but what you're gonna find overall is the next page, you can go to that, and you'll see what happened on the foreign markets and on the different places. The only place that you have it actively managed on your portfolio is in the bond side of the market. Remember I talked about the importance of having the bonds actively managed during periods of interest rate rises? Well, it came out of no worth of Fed. They, no one was expecting the Fed to come out with this, saying they're gonna do aggressive raising into this year, and they end up not doing it after all. But what we saw with your bonds, and you'll see it on the very last page on five of eight, but it shows what each bond, what your bond portfolios did. You'll see certain ones, as you go down each one of them, even on four of eight, you'll see things like Lord Abbot Short Duration was up 1.29, Double Line Total Returns of 1.70. You've got a lot of different managers doing different things, all having different ways of managing money. But you go into five of eight, you'll see that you had things such as your floating rate fund. They just gave you a cheaper share class, so you could see how you had Z shares and I shares, that's on page five of eight. Between the two, you actually were positive .15. Now, we know the aggregate bond index last year was negative .01. You were actually down on your domestic bonds .075, so you did see an underperformance on the bond side last year, but you more than made up for it in past years. Like even year-to-date, we're seeing the domestic bonds on your portfolio are beating their index by 1.45%, and your global bonds are beating it by 3.55 because of the management. So that breaks out your performance by security. Do you have any questions on that?
The only thing that stands out, and I'm sorry, it just shocked my head. We had a loss of $700,000, but fees of under $60,000. That just doesn't work in my head.
I, my goal is to, I still have to manage it, whether it's going up or down. It's kinda like having a doctor work with you whether you are sick or not. It's what's going on with the markets. It's not that any money manager or investment advisor stops charging whenever markets are down. It's actually a worse time for us. There's a lot more work to do when markets are down. I went on a lot of conference calls throughout the time regarding what was happening with the bond side especially, so I just, in this industry, even when the marks are way up, it's still the same half a percent, whether they're way up or they're flat. I just thought it worked.
Anybody else on the board have a comment about that? Or-
No, no.
Because we're gonna go out here.
I understand what you're saying. It's kind of-
It just shocked my head.
I mean, it's like, it's like analogous maybe to a lawyer, whether he wins or loses the case-
They get paid.
They get paid. Carefully. Am I outnumbered?
Only in, only in-
No, I'm just-
It tends to see fees.
I'm just trying to give you an analogy.
Not anywhere else. You still get paid.
Yeah, it's like the active managers, whether Peter Lynch was down or up with the Magellan Fund, he was getting paid while he was running it, because they're doing work while they're doing it. It's not that you stop doing work because the markets are down. It's actually a harder time, if you can believe it. It's kinda like the doctor, that the patient might die in them.
I just see that, remember those commercials, "If we don't do well, and you don't do well, then we don't get paid." I like this.
Yeah, you should kinda check, you're an attorney, you should check deeper into what their promises are with that. Yeah. They're not as good as you think they are.
Well, I'm happy to hear, even though it's a shocking number, that at least for how many years I've been on here, I finally heard a safe number from you. That would be like the first time.
I've always, I've had letters talk about the fees before, but it's, when you guys asked for different reports, your old report that I used was nothing I put together. It came from when I started, and I just kept going, because that's what I was told the committee wanted, but we changed it. When you guys came on, as soon as you came on, I put in the reports that I use all the time with all my clients, so not all the clients.
I'm glad you did that, because obviously I failed at getting those numbers before.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay. No, you've apologized before. That's all right. No worries.
Well, anyways, the good news is, like I said, your bonds are doing really well on the portfolio. What we're seeing, if you go past it, it's page seven of eight, this is what happened year-to-date, so you can see that you've made back the loss, and you're up 877 in two months, 877 grand, and you're up 8.18% is what you're seeing.
There was more questions, if you're sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good, Joe.
No, no, please, go ahead. Yeah, please.
What percentage of the funds now are passive?
Joe, I think you have to go to the microphone. Sorry. Just go, say your name, you're a member of the Ways and Means, and then ask the question. Thank you.
Joe Delacott, Ways and Means Committee.
Yes.
What percentage of the funds are passive, passively managed versus actively managed? Because that affects the fees.
It does. All of your equity funds are passively managed. They're all indexes, so all of those are that way. Your bond funds are all actively managed, and the reason for that is because when you go through periods of rising interest rates, it's best to have it actively managed. And like I said, if I go back, and I told you what happened last year, but even year-to-date, you're beating the index on those active managed bond funds by 1.45 on the domestic year-to-date, and 3.55 on the global. In 2017, you beat, your domestic managers beat the aggregate bond index by 3.54, and your global bonds by 7.39. That's after all their fees of what it costs to have them actively manage it. And we saw back to 16, we saw the global managers beat their index by 2.09, and the domestic managers beat it by 2.65 after all fees. So your active managers have done a really good job for you, and it's after all the fees. Go ahead.
I'm Nancy Wash, and I'm on the Pension Advisory Committee.
Yes.
And I'm going back to one of your earlier statements, and I just want to clarify something that I think the Board of Supervisors might be interested in, although they might already realize it. And you may, can you comment on the impact of the timing of the market being down, meaning down at the end of the year, on the MMO? Because I think that's what we're here to talk about.
I think it'd be really help, I have in your kit something to really bring that home. It's this chart right here. If you go back, it's past, it's after you have some mutual funds, it says John Hancock on the top of him. It's a chart right here, and you'll see intra-year declines. Most declines happen during the course of the year, and we go back in time with the government shutdown, which was in 2011. That shutdown affected the market from July until the end of September. The market dropped 19%, but in the last three months, they came back flat and ended up flat for the year. This particular market, it happened in the very beginning of October, and even it was a five-month before it went down to the trough, back to the peak. Our problem was, we couldn't go even flat because of what was happening in the markets. It didn't have enough time to recover. So most intra-year declines, they, going back to 1980, you'd have seen 39 of those years, 29 of the years that actually ended up positive, is what you would have seen. So it affects the MMOs, because if we had ended up positive, or even up 1%, Jim could address that, you would have met your actuarial assumption. We've got to get 8% right now over a two-year timeframe. So if we had 16%, and we were right pretty much on the money with that going into 18, but the problem is 18 ended up, if we had met in September, the markets were up dramatically in September. If you look at our statements, they're crazy up, but it's what happened at year-end. So it does affect your MMOs. Jim, could you maybe answer a better question than that?
Ed Denton, Pension Advisory Committee. I just want to speak to the returns and the fees and what Deb's role is. Correct me if I'm wrong, but basically, the market's gonna go up and down every year. Last year was up like 16%?
Yeah, you were close to 16.
16%. This year, it was down. It's gonna be up, it's gonna be down. So basically, what our investment advisor, Deb, you know, she's supposed to be helping shepherd us through the long term, so that we get ideally at least 8%. That's what the pension, the underlying assumption in terms of pension plans. Over, you know, so that's the challenge, so that's obviously that we're paying for. So the fact that it was down last year, you know, what she's also supposed to do in an up market, make sure that we're getting the best return we can, and in a down market, we're not losing as much as we could.
Right.
That's basically what she's, her role is.
But you are at the fate of the market, so it's like if you could have the best real estate agent in the world, and if you're sitting there in the best place in Philadelphia, and the markets get hit, you're gonna drop.
Right.
But your place will be the first to come back. We've already seen it, where the markets came back, and you guys are right back up there in the game.
Well, that's right. So basically, you know, you're not gonna make, us make, having a stupid mistake, you're giving us expert expertise-
Right.
...to make sure that the highs are as high as it can be, and the lows are as-
That's right.
Are as minimal as it could be.
Not as low as the issue.
So anyway, I just want to clarify.
Well said.
Is that it for questions? So then, what I want to show you is a couple things that I did into this year. Did you see John Hancock Strategic Income Fund? I sold that off in, right January 22nd. I listened to the conference call, and the manager was going to go into more high-yield bonds, and I felt it was better if we moved it over to the PIMCO Low Duration Fund, which is run by Dan Iverson that runs your PIMCO Income Fund. He took it over three years ago. And I moved 293 grand of that money over to the PIMCO Low Duration, and about $400,000 over to PIMCO Mortgage added to that. The other one I changed over was the BlackRock Global Long-Short Manager on 122. I also, that was only 70 grand in there. I moved that to PIMCO Mortgage and added some to PIMCO Income. Just to rebalance the portfolio, I don't want to have you overweighted in high-yield bonds, especially if we were going into a bad economy, even though the economy's very good right now. You could tell by the unemployment, it's good. So those are just a couple of key things I did right in January. Other than that, we just talked about this chart here already. Were there any questions on this, talks about intra-year declines? And lastly, this was, these charts, this is the latest that were out. They had not published the 18s yet. As a matter of fact, I just saw that the 18 was coming out this week on what happened with the market. So we can see that you've had some pretty big hits since 2000, when actually I was hired, so we've gone through some rough times together. And then it shows in this last chart here, which I think is important to look at, you can do it on your own, where you can see why we want to have money in emerging markets, mid-cap, small-cap, all different categories of the markets, why it's so important. And that was it with what is in your kit to go over. And last year, we were up 15.88 was the number that we were up, actually. The left side is really just the same thing as this end. Do you want me to go over it? It's really, we're just mirroring the same account. There's no difference in anything on this portfolio.
I don't need it.
Yeah. I didn't think so. It's exactly the same.
Just the non-uniform side.
Okay. It looks, the non-uniform looks exactly the same as the uniform side. Any other questions?
Does anyone else out? Anyone? Nope. All right. Thank you. Jim Kennedy?
I guess we question I anticipate.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Jim Kennedy, Thomas Anderson.
No, no, you can't. You gotta repeat that when you get to the podium.
Oh, really?
Speak into the microphone.
Hi, Jim Kennedy, Thomas Anderson. Nice to see you all.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Three topics to talk about today. Number one, investment impact on the pension funds. A question came up about that. Barbara, back to your earlier point, what happens is, we're doing the 1-1-19 Act 205 valuation this year, which is every two years, so the board knows. I've talked about this many, many times in the past meetings. That's based on the prior two years, 18 and 17. So unfortunately, by that little downturn which now popped back up, we're gonna get hit from a pension standpoint when we do the 1-1-19 Act 205. And basically, just holding everything else constant, I was on the phone with the actuary, running some numbers today, and basically, it's gonna be, this report will drive the next two MMOs, 2020 and 21, and on and on. But basically, we're looking at probably about $100,000 increase in the MMO to police
Barbara, back to your earlier point, what happens is, we're doing the 1-1-19 Act 205 valuation this year, which is every two years, so the Board knows, I've talked about this many, many times in the past meetings. That's based on the prior two years, 18 and 17. So unfortunately, by that little downturn which now popped back up, we're going to get hit from a pension standpoint when we do the 1-1-19 Act 205. And basically, just holding everything else constant, I was on the phone with the actuary, running some numbers today, and basically, it's going to be, this report will drive the next two MMOs, 2020 and '21, and on and on. But basically, we're looking at probably about 100,000 increase in the MMO to police and about 90,000 for non-U. And that's ballpark, it'll depend exactly on the amortization period, if it's 10 years, 14 years, so we have to see, but that's basically what the impact is going to be for those two items, you know, going, going forward. And by the way, I just want to tell you all, everybody across the country and also the state, I manage, we're one of the largest in the state, close to 300 plans, everybody got hit. Your returns are very reasonable with what I see across the board. I've seen people up in even 8 and 9% losses and basically, there's only one single account that I've run into that was on the positive side and it was invested in very, very ultra-conservative kinds of things. So you're right in the main zone, not up-down, you know, pretty much where, where the glide path is, at least for this year. And everybody in PA is going to end up getting hit with their MMOs increasing basically in '20 and '21, unfortunately because of this little market blip. Second thing that I wanted to bring up, that my understanding is that the Board had passed basically to adjust the interest rates down from eight to seven and three-quarters. We've all talked about that for close to five or six years. It's a smart, long-term move, we've all been recommending that. But I also want to be clear so that everybody understands, that in and of itself tends to decline and drive down the funding ratios of the plan slightly and also, as you know, impacts the MMOs. So where we're going to end up, and I just don't want to have anybody surprised by this, you know, I see the police plan and the non-uniform plan in the 70% range. The non-U probably a little lower, closer down to 70, maybe 72, 74, and police somewhere a little bit higher, 75, 76. I can't guarantee any of that, it has to go into the actuarial soup and see what other parameters in the assumptions and how those things are all playing out. But basically, you're still going to be in the same level of distress that you've been in, you're not dropping below 70 or changing a level. But I don't want anybody in this room to be surprised when we run those reports, that your funding ratios and overall, basically for the people that didn't see this, we were 81% on the 1-1-17 as a municipality, that's both plans combined together, all three plans, actually. And you're going to end up, you know, lower than that without a doubt, A, because of the market decline and B, because of making this long-term, you know, investment into funding the plan at a little lower rate. So, and I know you've all been through that piece of it, you know, and I think are fairly clear on that. The only other thing is, we're talking about the 1-1-19 reports and look, I've got all the financials for 1231-18 done, super early. They're here with Ken so that they can be audited, reviewed by the various committees on the 1-1-19 Act 205s. I can't do the police report, just so you're all aware, until we get that contract solidified. So I'm on hold and I want to just make sure I'm not going to have the new numbers to run, you know, the future MMOs. And usually what we try to do is really jump on that so that when we see you guys, you all for the Ways and Means, you know, in the summer timeframe, we would try to get Ken to do the estimated payrolls and then pull together those MMOs so you can really get a good handle on the budget. So as soon as the contract is ready, or if someone tells me, look, everything on the pension side is set, there's only other options that are open, you know, we can proceed with that. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that. That's really it on our end and we'll try to get the Act 205 reports done as quickly as possible and have a window in to the actual MMOs for 2020 and '21.
Question. The $190,000 that we'll be paying out in increased MMO for '20 and '21, is that for each year? That amount?
It's going to be, well, what's going to happen is, you're going to be 100 in police, 90 in non-uniform, and that's going to go for approximately 14 years for police and about 10 years for the non-uniform plan. What happens is, those losses are factored in from the actuary and then based on the amortization tables, it's that chart that I've showed you all in the detailed meetings, it depends on the exact timeframe, they get paid off over time, but it's a number of years when you have one of those that's going to get paid off over. So it's going to go up and it's going to stay up until that declines, basically.
I'm just, what do we have to budget as an increase in our MMO contribution for '21 and '22 and '23 and '24?
I won't be able to tell you until we do the new Act 205.
I see, okay. The way I heard it, my ears, is that we've already had that increase that we have to fork out.
I'm giving you a precursor heads-up that you basically have a 200,000 increase overall coming, but I can't be certain about all the other factors that go into the actuarial, demographics, there's nothing else that I've seen strange, that we've had like a disability. I don't sense our payroll assumption's going to be way out of whack. So there's nothing else that I'm going, oh, there's a genie in the woodpile here. So I'm just trying to give you a sense that you're looking at about 200 grand, but we need to run that study and see exactly what it's going to be. And there's other factors that also impact those MMOs. It's not just standalone. If your payrolls increase, if you add more officers into the mix, all those things will also drive the MMOs. But just from the market decline, 200K.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Question?
Please.
Yeah, Ed Denton from the Pension Advisory Committee. You made reference to the MMO and you said the math depends on the amortization period, 10 to 14 years? I wouldn't sure what that was.
Ed, if you look in the valuation report, and I can show you a copy of it, both the plans have different amortization schedules, you know, based from the actuarial requirements that are there, and they're different periods. And so it depends on, the non-uniform tends to be a little shorter than police right now at around 10, and I think the police had stuff that was at 14 or 15. So it just depends on where that ultimately works out.
What would drive it to one end versus the other?
It basically changes its age, demographics in the plan, the actuary determines that and also the parameters.
Yeah, so it's age and demographics drives the amortization.
Yep, on the timeframe, correct. And also the rules that the actuary, it's like a depreciation schedule, there's certain rules on how long they can amortize things.
Got it.
And I can show you those schedules if you want to see.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. We'll talk more depth, but I just wanted to leave a couple more questions.
Yep, yep. And it just so happens, police is a little longer than non-uniform.
Other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, I guess, thank you very much, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Pension Advisory Committee, Mr. Denton. Thank you for being here, everybody who's here for the pension and the Ways and Means, appreciate it. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
We got it. All right, so glad to see everybody today. It's been a while since we got together. Thank you for the opportunity also to present. So on behalf of the Pension Advisory Committee, so we'll just sort of walk through it. First of all, is a quick overview in terms of where we've been. We're obviously a new, a new committee as of, actually as of 2018. So as you all remember, the committee was formed based upon recommendation, the Ways and Means Pension Subcommittee and was approved by the Board of Supervisors in fall 2017. We had a first meeting on June 11, 2018. One of the things we wanted to accomplish with the creating the advisory committee was to bring in some expertise to help, to help advise the Board of Supervisors. And so, you know, this is a listing of the committee members, you can see they all have a pretty good background. We're not experts, but certainly, certainly, we, we know a bit about finance and some of us actually have more expertise, more expertise than others. But anyways, it's a good group of people, very dedicated. And as you can see in the bottom, you guys may remember that the, one of the things we want to do is to increase the frequency of dealing with pensions. So you were seeing the meetings were twice a year with the Pension Committee. The plan was to actually have quarterly meetings. We've actually been having monthly meetings since, since June, so we're, we're a motivated group.
Means you got a lot to do, that's what it means.
Be a lot to do, right. All right, so the good news is, is progress is being made. As I mentioned before, we established the Pension Advisory Committee in last June. We've increased the frequency of the pension meetings. We, I think this is the note a couple of times already, is that we're investing contributions on a monthly basis, dollar-cost averaging, so that way, you know, we're less subject to the, of the timing of the markets and when we're putting the money in. We, the township decided last fall to begin lowering the discount rate. I think it's going to happen next year, right, 2020?
Not this year for 1-1-19.
For 1-1-19. All right, so that's good, that's happening as well. The pension, the township's also been making contributions in excess of the MMO, that's good news also. That's, and then we're consistently recording, there's one year aberration on this, but you know, pretty much consistently recording the pension contributions. The, we all, we had, the committee held orientation meetings with Deb and Mr. Kennedy last fall. Thank you very much for your time, it was really worthwhile and we hope to continue to have a dialogue with you guys and get the pensions where they, where we hope they all want to go to. And also, we drafted a list of long-term objectives for the Board of Supervisors Pension Committee to be reviewed and for your input. All right, so the, Mr. Kennedy referenced the financials that did come in, so I was in here a couple of weeks ago updating our charts. So this is what the deficit looks like as of December 31, 2018. Here, this is assuming an 8% discount rate. This is assuming a 7% discount rate. So as you can see, you know, last year, we, you know, we had a good year and so we had a, you know, you could see it going from there to there, but unfortunately, the negative results brought us down here. But I think more importantly, is that the trend, the trend is like this and it has been like this. 8%, and then if you look at it even for 7%, so this needs to get fixed. It's not going in the right direction. You know, what we want to do is, we want it to be going in this direction and ideally, we want it to be floating around here, so we, there's some work to do. One of the key assumptions here is the discount rate. There's a lot of assumptions go into it and the discount rate's a big one. And that's something we talked with Deb about, with the, you know, with the committee, the Pension Advisory Committee last fall, and I think we all generally agree that 8% is not the right number and we have to figure out what the right number is. But as Mr. Kennedy indicated, depending what number we choose, will have an impact on the liability and will have an impact on the MMO. And it's a big assumption.
Okay, I just want to make one comment and as I've been looking at your chart, if you even look at this chart that I put in here with the Ibbson chart, between 2000, January of 2000 till the end of 2011, if you had a million bucks invested, that million in the S&amp;P 500, the million would have gone down to 600 grand by the end of 2002, then back to a million by 2007, then down to 500 grand, back to a million by the end of 2011. So 11 years, a million bucks invested with nothing going in or out, you now had 1.07 million. That's the problem with the pension plans and why not just your plan is showing underfunded, but across the country. And corporations, fortunately, with all this money's been repatriated from overseas, corporations have used that money to be able to fund and then make cash balance accounts.
Right, they had to increase the funding, but also the, the underlying return of 8% is probably not realistic, I think.
You can't get there, exactly. You can't get there from here according to what the, what the analysts are saying.
That's right. All right, so this is the, this is the funding percentages here, has the, has the non-uniform, the uniform combined, and then this is at the 7%. Again, you know, we're, we're more or less hovering around, around this area here. Where we want to be is, we want to be up here. We want to be, when the market goes up and down, we want to be going up and down up here, not up and down down here.
How do we get there?
Good question.
Four million in the plan.
All right, so, so anyway, this is, this is our long-term objectives. We can use long-term objectives. The first thing we'd like to do is to work with the Board of Supervisors, Town Management, the Investment Advisor, and the actuary to develop a long-term action plan to address the fund deficit. It's not something that we can fix overnight, it's going to have to be looked at over a period of time, but, and it's a complicated issue. So one of the things we'll be working with you guys, you know, and everyone else to figure out, how do we solve this? Number two is, we'd like to work with Deb to develop a formal discount rate target range. The rate will be a sort of a living document and revisit, revisit on a regular basis. And then, once we decide what a reasonable, reasonable discount rate is, and then we work with the Board of Supervisors and the Ways and Means Committee, come up with a migration plan, plan to basically say, all right, how do we, how do we adjust it to the right number over time and how to, you know, and, and in the most appropriate way.
So that rate that you want to discuss with Ms. Brady is going to be either 7, 8, or somewhere in between? Is that what you're talking about, or 6?
Maybe, maybe, between 6 and 7.
Okay, so, all right.
All right, so, so one of the things also we'll be doing is, you know, meeting with Deb on a regular basis to, to help, you know, to act on behalf of the township, act on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, because, I mean, she has a lot of, I mean, there's a huge, a lot of complexity in what she's doing and so basically, we want to, we want to work together and become more familiar with it, that way we can sort of.
She meaning Ms. Brady, I just want to keep the record straight.
That's right, that's right. So basically, and then, then come, as she, as Ms. Brady references, we've been using old reports, so hopefully we'll come up with a new set of reports that will be easier to understand and things like that. So that's what we're looking to do. Actually, that's, that's an extra recommendation here, those reports. Also to, you know, one of the things you have to do, and this is done in all areas of the township, is, is, you know, you don't, you don't give contracts out to our best friend, we actually put them out to competitive bids, it gets a good financial stewardship type of thing to do. We, you know, we, we, you know, we, and there's a variety of reasons why we're going to make that decision. You know, we could, you know, could conclude that we want to stay with the status quo, we could change things, but that'll have to be, it's a good idea to revisit that on a regular basis. So that's, that's one of the things that we'll be working on as well over time. And also, interact closely with the Ways and Means Committee to get a better understanding of the budget and the long-range plan, to make sure that we sort of, that's all sort of in sync. And so we're looking at, at the township's finances holistically. And then last time is to develop and implement a continuing education plan for the Pension Advisory Committee as well as the Pension Committee and the Board of Supervisors. This is, as we all seen, this is very complicated and so, the more we all collectively know of what we're doing, the better job we'll do. All right, so, all right, in terms of proposed next steps, is, today is part of this proposed next steps, is, but it's going to be, so we'd like to review the Pension Advisory, Pension Subcommittee's report. You can receive copies of those and provide status on that. So basically, over the first and second quarter this year, between budget meetings and other venues to meet with the Board of Supervisors and the Ways and Means Committee to help us to come up with, to start developing this long-term plan and how we go about it. Next is, we're going to have this joint committee, joint meeting with the Ways and Means Committee, that's going to happen in May. We're also going to, we've already started working on the, a new pension report and that'll be, will likely be sort of perfected over time, but hopefully we can make some improvements in there. We'll begin working with the, the discount rate target and then, meeting with the Investment Advisor, starting in 2019, obviously, and then, and then working on this long-term action plan to, you know, so how do we solve this problem? That's one of the things we'll be working on. So I think the last, I think the last slide is, one of the things that we'd like the Board of Supervisors take action on is, as part of this, this reporting, upcoming reporting cycle, is to do a, update their sensitivity analysis that we did two years ago. This is, this assumes, this was based on 2016 data.
You got to stay at the mic, Ed.
I'm sorry.
Thanks.
This is based on 2016 data and so this is the, the unfunded liability and this is what the unfunded liability would be at these discount rates. This is what the MMO is, combined MMO is, which combines over here, and this is what it is at various discount rates. So you can see, for example, Barb, you asked the question, is, is if we lowered the discount rate based upon the 2016 data from 8% to 7%, that would increase the MMO by $375,000. If we, if we, and as you can see, it's more or less, it goes up linearly, I can't get that word right. So basically, if we're to, if increased, if the right number is 6.5%, that's going to increase it probably to 500,000. So that's, and this is going to probably increase the, the liability.
Mr. Kennedy?
Same as more.
Just one quick point on this. I just want to make sure, number one, we didn't prepare these numbers and the relationships with the interest scenarios, they're not linear at all. And when you drop down basically from 7 to 8 or adjust those rates, the normal cost of the plan also changes, so you got to have an actuary run this. And that's one of the reasons when we did the cost study, when we changed down the 25 basis points. So I would just suggest, these, these are great, but just be very careful about.
These are your numbers. They're your numbers.
Oh, they are?
Yes. I would, I would, I would not do, so basically, these are your numbers based upon these cost studies that you sent them.
Those are the interest.
Those are the cost study, yeah, we, we, we're not, we're not, we're not actuaries.
He didn't make them up.
I didn't make them up.
I just want to make sure the group knows, because the normal cost, there's a lot of variables that change.
Okay.
Right. Yep.
Good points, Booth.
All right, so, so anyway, is, I hear you, but you know, I, what I did is, I took your numbers and I graphed them and it looks linear to me. Now, that's based on, that's only one variable.
Subject to his review.
Yeah, so anyway, more, more, we can talk on that, certainly, that's, that's TB day. So anyway, one of the things we'd like to do, if the Board of Supervisors could do, is to authorize the updating of this, of this data and what I think ideally, the rest of the committees, or some of the committees here, is that, as you can see, we basically had it from 8% to 7%. Well, we think, well, at least what I'm suggesting is that maybe what we have it is, we have, we have four different scenarios, but we have 7.5, 7, 6.5, and 6, just to see what that is. The cost is approximately $3,000 and we, we're suggesting that this be updated on a regular basis.
Do we have actual costs on how much?
We don't.
We don't?
We don't.
We do or we don't?
We do not.
Oh, okay.
We do not.
Seventeen...
What happened is, you don't want to do this, you want to do it every two, if you're doing it, every two years. So we did this based on the 1-1-17, and the next time around, after you do the 1-1-19 report...
I think we based on 16, because it was done in 16.
Well, it has to be based on the last, it has to be...
You're right, it was 17.
It's 1-1-17, I'm sure. So, and then 1-1-19 will be the next if you want to update it. And the reason that we're talking about this is, that when you look at these interest rate declines from 8, what we're trying to do is give you basically a smooth landing with all the planning and things that we're talking about, so that you can plan and also in the right time, start to ratchet this down by maybe a quarter point at every valve cycle over the next, you know, two, two, two years that we do this. And that way, you're not trying to make a jump like this where you have a massive budget spike.
Okay.
And that's the plan that we're talking about.
So we're doing this now for 2019, or wait until the end of 2019?
Well, I think the timing would be ideal to do this year, right?
If you all want to do this again, once we get the 1-1-19 data done, which will be in the next couple of months, depending on police, you can make a decision, and we can talk and do it after the fact and, you know, review this again.
So basically, later on this year, once the numbers are settled, and that way, we actually, we're giving them advance notice, so they can just hopefully arrange it such way they can push a couple of buttons and then run the scenario.
So cost less.
Before Jim sits down, I got a question for both of you, though.
For Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy.
It's all right. Ms. Brady, Mr. Kennedy.
We've all agreed that it makes sense to step it down, let's say a quarter.
Whatever.
So what benefit, other than just being more and more accurate at 6 and 3/4 or 7, what really is the benefit? We're going to step it down slowly anyway, so, not to take money out of your pocket, but what, I mean, is it...
I wouldn't recommend that you do it again, frankly. Once is enough, and, look, you can get so caught up in data paralysis here, and I wasn't trying to be a flip with my answer about...
You aren't, no, no.
How to fix this plan.
No, I like it.
What we want to do here is a combination of things, looking at the whole picture and basically looking at, because plans are funded over many, many years, so we want to gently start stepping this rate down to get into a more reasonable investment return zone, let's say in the 6 and 1/2, 7 range, whatever that may be at some point in time. And basically, also, the other option is to start, as we've talked about multiple times, putting some extra fund. MMO means minimum, minimum obligation, and one of my suggestions, we all know that we have an unfunded liability of $4-plus million, start chipping away every single year. A, it puts extra money in a piggy bank where we have a year like this going down, and B, you're planning it from a budgeting and a long-term, like a capital budget standpoint, to try to bring that thing back up. But frankly, it's totally up to the committees and what they want to do, but I wouldn't recommend running that study again unless it were really significant and we got to a point where, because you're not going to be able to change the interest rate again until we do the 1-1-21 report, and running it now on 1-1-19 isn't going to give you current data by the time we're all the way out at 1-1-21.
Right, but one of the reasons why we'd want the data is so we can do long-range planning.
And that's totally, that's totally up to all of you, you know, if that's something you feel...
We'll get the information.
This is our suggestion, and so one of the things we're going to be doing, you know, on any of this stuff, it's going to be an ongoing dialogue. No decisions have to be made today, but we figure we'd like to post this request, and then as we have our dialogue over the remainder of the year, then we can make that decision.
You two talk more about that?
Yeah.
We talk, absolutely.
Oh, okay. So you're saying maybe not necessary, you're saying you need it for long-range planning?
That's the idea. Again, it's, and Ken has heard this as well, at our meetings.
Yes, indeed. Go ahead, Deb.
Ms. Brady has a comment.
One quick comment. When you look at what the big pension plans that are, they're sitting there telling cowlers and plans like that what their number they should be looking at for their actual assumption. Wilshire is coming out right now at 5.66% on a portfolio at 6535. Yverson's coming out at 5.86.
So that's what their discount rate is?
That's what they're looking at for their numbers right now, that they think are normal numbers. So when they're looking at corporations that are going out there and funding their plans right now, if that money's coming, being repatriated, they're going, get to these kind of actual assumptions.
That's right.
So if you think about it, I think a good way to think about it, if you were doing your own financial plan, and say you're going to retire in 20 years or 10 years, and you go meet with a financial planner, they're going to say, how much money you haven't, how much money you have saved? And so you say, I have a million dollars saved, and they run your numbers of what you have income needs for at retirement, and they use these assumptions there. If you're running that at an 8% rate and you're only getting 7, you're going to be underfunded. You're going to sit there at retirement and go, I can't get there, I'm going to have to work longer, I'm going to have to be on a budget. So that's the thing, it's just that when you're looking at these kind of numbers of 8%, it's not just your plan, it's across the board.
Yeah, I ran my pension at a 5% discount rate, so.
Yeah.
I was conservative.
So stupid question. Why don't we just reduce that rate?
Well, so, Barb, 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 and answer...
I said, stupid question.
Yeah, it's, 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 that's a good question.
The reason is that it's very expensive to lower that rate even by a quarter of a point, and you want to kind of take this in graduated steps. And so what we've done, and we've spent hours and hours and hours working with the pension group, with Ways and Means, and I'll continue to do that, and if we think, and the timing is right, and I'll also tell you, look, I'd wait to do this study, because you all know, I've been around here for years, I'm not going to run up your bill unnecessarily on studies that you don't need. And so we can kind of look at certain things or say, hey, I wouldn't really do this now, and I'll work closely with this group to figure out what they need, and we'll get it done.
Okay.
So, I mean, basically, what we're suggesting, this is, I mean, your question is basically, is we're going to come up with a target range. First, we have to figure out what we want to hit, and then we're going to come up with a migration path, how we get there, how often we lower it, and over what period of time.
Okay.
So that's basically what we're planning to do.
Nine to lifetime.
So, whoops, crap, sorry. I think that's, I think that's my last slide.
My takeaway, Ed, is that the committee, Pension Advisory Committee, needs to continue, and this is just reinforcing, needs to continue to work with Ms. Brady and Mr. Kennedy on an ongoing basis to make sure everybody's in sync and they're reporting back to the Board of Supervisors as appropriate. My main question to you now, is there, when I look at your next steps...
Right.
Is there anything you need action on here tonight?
Not tonight.
Okay.
But, you know, we will be coming, you know, this is our, this is our path forward.
Right.
Actually, one thing is, do you think we're on the right path, or do you think we're way off? That would be the one question.
I think you're on the right path, but that's me with no brain on this stuff, so.
Well...
With my, you know, my ability to understand this, and it was really very well presented, so I do understand it, I think it's, I think you're on the right path.
And I agree that it's on the right path. The thing we have to be cautious of, they have a lot of next steps, and we, I would, the committee talked about this, is how do we focus on the right next step? What is the very next one that we need to be working on? Because you can get hung up and be working on five things versus the most important one, so.
That's right.
The committee talked about that.
The committee talks about that, you know, we've been meeting monthly, and it's a complex issue, and we're working that out. So these, as you can see, these are approximate timing. We're going to, what we're going to try to do is, with everyone on the committee, we're going to try to prioritize, you know, what we should be doing, and we're going to be looking for regular input from the Board of Supervisors and the Ways and Means Committee in order to figure out what's the most practical way to move forward.
Thank you.
That's very good.
Does anybody have any questions before it sits down?
Just two comments. One, I'll...
Mr. Dutton.
I'll, I'll send you an email.
Sure.
It's easier that way, this isn't the right venue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you ask my opinion, you know, every time you ask my opinion, I'll give it to you. Even when you don't ask sometimes, I'll give it to you. And the other thing, Barbara, is we all have different strengths, so, I mean, there's...
I don't feel bad that I don't have it.
No, okay.
I really don't. I'm fine.
Because I'm, I...
I'll mention two things. Overall, and there's a huge amount of work that's going on into this, there are sort of three things that you need to address, long-term and short-term. One, if you want to whittle down at the unfunded liability, you have to start putting in more money than the MMO on an annual basis. I've been saying it for seven years. Figure that out, look at the long-term budget, and start making the deposits. This is my, you know, soapbox that I'm on in all these pension meetings. That's number one.
We've been doing it.
And you have, which is great, and we started in 18 and try to continue doing that. Second, and some people have a liquidation of this or that, or an investor that they can put into the pension fund to try to help elevate those, but I would try to just chip away at this and start off, and then make a commitment every year so you can plan. Two, we obviously know, and where the right ultimate zone is, there's debate about that, but is to start making that interest rate come down on a fairly steady basis so that you fund the plan correctly. And three, you know, you evaluate the pension benefits, you know, as you go forward and look at those things. But those are the three key drivers, not to get lost in all of the turbulence.
Thank you.
It's really, I think, for Mr. Kennedy and Mrs. Brady, because we kind of go back and forth, Colleen Mullen, I'm on the Pension Committee and Ways and Means. So we have, we do go back and forth, I think, trying to identify what is an appropriate funding level, and I would like to know what you see out there as professionals, that some of your clients really target or see, and what you think is appropriate.
There's, and the committee has done a lot of work. I think you guys have done research on it. There's no definite answer to that. Some people will say, they used to throw around 90%, and some will say 100 or even 110, so that you have basically a, an excess there when you run into a rainy day or have a problem. So there basically is no generally accepted answer. The answer I would give, it depends here, too, on your budget parameters and, you know, what you're able to do, but you don't want to see a pension plan that's slowly, slowly deteriorating, and the key is Pennsylvania, through Act 205 and the MMOs, has a mechanism that's designed every two years to do a new balance sheet and an actuarial evaluation and step those up if they need be. So there's a good mechanism in place to do it. But some people will say it's 100%.
Joe Delacott, Pension Committee and also Ways and Means, having spent seven months with Ed and Bob on the task force, we read tons of literature, et cetera, et cetera. What we came up with, we looked at like best practices. Best practices is 100% funding.
Well, maybe you've heard of this.
And we were looking at maybe a target. Maybe the target should be 95 to 100. We haven't agreed to on that yet, but best practices, from all the readings I've looked at, says 100% is the target.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, let me just add to this, this is something we presented, the Subcommittee presented, this is, because there was a lot of debate even before we formed the previous committee, but basically, this is something that we found, it's called the 80% funding myth, and, I mean, there is no, as it says here, there is, there is no, the second bullet here, there is no single level of funding that should be identified as the defining line between a healthy and unhealthy pension. All plans should have the objective of achieving 100% funding unless there's, unless, or if the different targets are decided upon, there should be a, those should be, the reason why should be clearly identified. A plan's actual funding should have a built-in mechanism to achieve a plan of 100%. Ratio should be looked at over time as opposed to once, you know, one point in time. And also, the final one is that, is if Doylestown Township had a funding percentage, funding ratio of 50%, and the unfunded liability was $100,000, would that be a problem? No. If Doylestown Township, whoops, if Doylestown Township had a, whoops, I mean... All right, so, this is, this is a 7% discount rate.
At the microphone, Ed, sorry.
That's a 7% discount rate right there. In 2018, that's over $7 million. If it's a 6% discount rate, it's almost $10 million. Now, that's as much as the new building we're building, almost over there. That's, if it's $10 million, that's a problem. And also, it's not going in the right direction. If we were going up, you know, keep in mind, keep in mind, we had, with the financial crisis, it was 2009, right? It should have gone down, it started coming back up. It's not, it's going in the wrong direction. So we have to do something, and it's, and that's not going anywhere. It should be up, it should be going up in a bull market, and it should be closer to 100%.
Okay, another question.
Key point, I just want you all to be aware, the market will never bail you out of this problem.
Right.
I agree with that.
And I know the pension group, but I just want to make sure, the market helps and it hurts in certain years, but it never solves the unfunded ratio.
Okay. Now, I have another question, don't yell at me. How much do we have to do every year to make it 100%?
We, well...
Is that what you're working on?
Well, that's, that's the plan, that's the long-term plan to figure out, and one of the key assumptions are...
Idea?
Is what the discount rate, well, what, you know, if you were to ask me, right off the top of my head, is...
Go to the, go to the other chart.
Which one?
The one that shows the 375.
Yearly basis, I'm playing...
Yearly basis, all right.
Right here.
Right here. So basically, let's say the right number is, and this is old data, this is based on 2016 data, basically, we'd have to increase the MMO, if we assume 7%, $375,000 a year.
375 a year?
Correct.
Increase on top of...
On top of what we're already paying.
On top of all the other increases.
All right, what are we already paying? I want to know what the bottom line is.
Yeah, well, that's, that's...
Or thereabouts.
That's a rough, that's a rough bottom line. So one of the things we want to come up with is a range.
Yes, yeah, that's on top of what you pay for MMO today.
Now, if it's 6%, back of the envelope, you double that number.
I think, you know what, I think we have to do what we have to do, and if we have to do, like, let our residents know, do a publicity campaign on letting them know, we have to increase taxes just to pay for our pension, then we need to get that out there.
Well, one of the things we need to do is...
That's why their plan is one of the highest priorities, to be able to come to the board and say, this is the plan, this is what the impact is, and then we can say, how are we going to execute that? And that's where it comes into going out to the board.
And as Jim mentioned...
Working on it now.
Well, we are working on it. We're working on monthly.
It's like to start working on it now.
Good, good.
I want to tell, I want to tell my residents, like, we're going to have to have a million dollars every year for our pension.
Okay.
I want to say that now.
Well, it's premature to say it now.
Yeah, all right.
Premature to say it now.
Is it premature to say I will need $800,000 more a year?
But it's not premature to say we have a problem. It's not premature to say we're at 70%. We're not, it's not premature to say we're going to have to work ourselves out of this for years.
Right.
We can communicate the problem, not the resolution.
Communicate the problem is, so much of this percentage goes to the uniform pension, so much of the percentage goes to non-uniform pension. Hello taxpayers, that's what it's going to cost for police officers and for non-uniform people.
And it's a three-legged stool, too. I mean, I think everybody needs to understand it's a three-legged stool because there's funding from the township, but there's funding that we receive from the state, and also the employees, both uniform and non-uniform do contribute.
Yeah, so...
So it's a three-legged stool, so we need to make sure that the three-legged stools...
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. So we're not going to, I don't think we should even attempt to solve it tonight, other than...
Why not?
Because we will.
Well, I got to get into my head, sir, I got to start, like, mouthing it, you know? That's my way, I think.
So, Barbara, one of the things we want to do is we want to have an ongoing dialogue this year with you and with the rest of the Board of Supervisors, to get us all on the same page, and with Ms. Brady and Mr. Kennedy, and get us all on the same page, and then solve the problem. As I said to Ken when we were talking about this, a month, about a month ago, I said, if Doylestown Township can't solve this problem, nobody can solve this problem.
Yeah, because we have some really smart people in this room.
We do, we do. So it's, it's, we had to put our heads together.
Ms. Brady?
I think Barbara makes a lot of sense about some kind of number out there, because you're not going to get an exact number anyways, but think about it, if you have a kid going to college, and your kid is now 15, they're going to college in three years, you have going to college in three years, you have to save a whole lot more than if you started saving for that kid when it was a baby. So, the more you keep waiting, whether it's two years, or, you know, I'm just saying, there should be some kind of a number, whether it be, try to fund an extra 500 grand this year, or 300 grand, whatever it is, I know you're trying to work on that, I'm just saying.
You're preaching, you're preaching-
I'm preaching to the choir.
And B, that's one of the reasons why we're asking for-
Number's going to keep changing anyways.
We're asking for that study, that's, so we have a more, we have a more definitive idea of, because what we don't want to do is, we don't want to, we don't want to make up a number and, and say, an artificial target, we'd actually have an expert come up with the range, and so, and then we can all buy into that number.
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy doesn't seem to think that that could be relevant at this time.
We, we'll talk about it, we don't have to solve it today, I mean, I'm not sure if everyone in the pension committee, the pension advisory committee-
Let them, let the committee figure that out.
Yeah.
All right, then.
Yep.
All right, thank you. I wasn't going to say one more thing, but I probably should shut up now.
We want to say Ways and Means Committee, I think.
Yeah. Okay, Ways and Means Committee.
Ed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you to the committee, too.
Yeah, thanks.
Committee's doing a lot of good work.
You know how we prepared, this is what I wanted to say, you know how we prepared for the sewer study and the cost of, of that community?
Yep.
How hard we worked on it?
Yep.
How much information we got out there beforehand?
I-
We worked on that study for how many years? Before we could actually put the sewers in, we needed to have a science, the science base for that. That's the sort of thing we should be doing now for the next, you know, five, 10 years. We should be preparing the public that this is going to, this is an expense we have to share, but we have to do it now. Roll it out now.
Barbara, some people have put a dedicated-
But-
Some municipalities have put a dedicated millage, you know, for pension, just to set an amount every year, you know, that they've done, just so you're aware.
Yep, I think, I think the public has the right to know how much pensions cost Doylestown Township.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because we've been, like, doing a shell game for years and hiding the-
Oh, no.
Not shell, no, no, go ahead. We've been, we've been doing it, we've been moving money around, I don't mean a shell game, because it's a negative connotation, but we've been doing the best we can with the resources we have, but they don't know what the police contract's going to cost. They should know what the police contract's going to cost. They should know what the non-uniform pension costs.
I have no problem with that.
And they should know what the health insurance costs.
I'm on board.
Both pension, both uniform and non-uniform.
Agreed.
Everybody knows what the teachers cost.
Yep.
That's all I need to say about that.
Go, Brenda.
Miss Brenda.
And that's kind of a-
Brenda's Brenda.
Oh, no, 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 no. I was prepared to kind of run through things a little bit more, as we have in the past, but I congratulate the board for putting, Board of Supervisors, for putting these groups together tonight. This is very interesting, and as I watch people walk in tonight, we're going to take a look at our committee members, and oh my gosh, don't you see some familiar names from those who are on the Pension Committee in the past? And then also, you know, we have Mr. Salnick there as Vice Chair, while he's been on the Pension Subcommittee on the Ways and Means previously, and you're going to hear a common theme tonight from me, and about how our committees in Doylestown Township are working together, which I think is much different. And I really am enjoying the conversation, again, from my personal perspective of what I've done for years, because I don't think there's too many townships. I would like to have a conversation with Mr. Kennedy about how many townships, at another time, are actually looking at things as we are, five years ahead. So, here are the committees-
You're doing an excellent job ahead of many, and most.
Yeah, I kind of knew that, but it's good to hear, it's good to hear it, it's good to hear it.
You want me to take the mic and say that, so everybody else can hear it?
But anyway, it's, and it's, and it's nice to hear that. Anyway, let's move on. So, you see the committees there, we have Mr. Delicat, we have Colleen Mullen, and we have Mr. Salnick, and they are on the Ways and Means, and they're also on the Pension. Mr. Denton is former Ways and Means, and now moved on. But anyway, and, you know, Ed is in the back room at this point in time, and I get to be the Chair of this committee, and it's a lot of fun. I'm not retired yet, so I still have this other distraction, but that may change very soon, so I may get to spend as much time on this as what you do. Anyway, I'm going to hit some things rather quickly, but yet, they've become more germane as I've listened to the first two presentations, because our goal is long-term, long-term financial stability. It's a five-year plan, and I don't think there's many municipalities that have a five-year plan either, and look at anything more than upcoming budget. So, you're to be commended for that. In conjunction with Township Administration, we develop recommendations, don't we? That, to be presented to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration in budget development. And we review and study financial topics that have been recommended by the Board of Supervisors, and we're an advisory group to assist with financial matters and probably cause consternation from time to time with Board of Supervisors, as well as Township Administration. What we do, we, well, we have the Ways and Means Committee meeting, which we've talked about. Once a month, we sit and periodically compare actual revenues and expenditures with the approved budget, we project the impact of current financial decisions and economic conditions over five years for our guest speakers tonight, we recommend changes to improve financial reporting procedures and the effective use of township assets, and again, I'm going to hit it, monitor fund balance over a period of time, the short term, the current year, which is important for planning the budget, but the long term, over five years. We actually have, well, looking back on the development, budget documents focus on important, significant line items, reattain the ability with our committee to deep dive into details, again, provide the public a five-year view of finances. And this year, I think we made some suggestions, some of our budget documents are more user-friendly, I think they're written, tried to be written in more of a layman's terms. When you deal with governmental accounting, it really can be very boring and prescribed as to what we have to report and how we have to report it. But yet, if you try to take away from that and move into English, simpler terms, it becomes more interesting. Enhanced documentation of proposed capital and major spending programs. I actually did, Dave and everyone, mean to bring my notebook tonight and show how it is clearly laid out, and we can look at the particular projects that the township will be working on the next year and the next two or three years. A lot of time was spent on the refined method to project EIT, earned income taxes, very important for the township as far as the revenue that's received, and a slight error on that can really change the trend, or not, I don't even want to say an error, a slight refinement can change the trend in what's being reported for EIT, which obviously will have an impact over multiple years. And for the department heads that are in the room, or might be listening or watching this, there were three reviews this year of 615 lines of budget as to where you are in the current year and what you're expecting for the next year. And that was with, I believe, eight different department heads. So, a lot of work for the administration and the department heads to go over numbers. Implementation of the Pension Subcommittee recommendations, I don't think I need to say anything else about that. And joint Subcommittee with the Park and Rec on the Community Center. So, I'm going to pause there. We see tonight with the group that is here, how we've had, you know, joint committee work in the past, but this year, we started to work with the Park and Rec Board, looking at the Community Center. So, in addition to having a Subcommittee, Mr. Salnick is also on the Park and Rec Board, we started looking at, you know, how we can work at bringing that onboard, and also, there was a first draft of a business plan for the Community Center. Planning for the 2020 budget. With administration, we'll continue to hone budget planning, and the next slide, you'll see that it is only March, but yet, we're going to start planning on April the 2nd for the 2020 budget. Seek ways to engage and educate residents about the township's budget. Speaking right to Mrs. Lyons' point as to talking about how can we get the information out there about the pension, or the Community Center, or just even looking at a five-year plan. And then assist with the multi-year budget again, assist with reporting the financial impact of the building, and I did mention bridge, basically, bridges have been put behind at this point in time, because of good reporting, good reports, and the fine-tuned budgeting and reporting of other capital projects. And again, just periodic financial reporting to the Board of Supervisors. This is a very small, you know, difficult to read, but again, if you will note, April 2nd, we're going to have a meeting to start talking about the 2020 budget. Those dates are laid out there, in July, or June, there's a major date, and then again, in September, October, we have several meetings. And one thing, excuse me, I forgot to mention, I just looked at Mr. Denton, again, on May 22nd, we're going to have a joint committee meeting with the Pension Advisory Committee. And between now and then, we're going to continue working with the Park and Rec about the Community Center. The Park and Rec will be here on the, our next meeting, do you plan on meeting with them before that? Are you participating in that next meeting on the 19th? If you know. Um, I, actually, I've had some conversations with the Chair about that, and we're anticipating that we may have a meeting next week on Tuesday afterwards, because the subcommittees have been coming together to have a discussion about that. I don't know that we'll directly participate, you know, but- Okay. Well, there, there will be input into what's being stated. Excellent, thank you. So, we're collaborative with other township committees, I've already demonstrated that, working with Park and Rec, Pension Subcommittee, and we want to continue to assist and refine the business plan for the Community Center, as we bring it on, assist with the timing and type of, type of second debt borrowing to complete the construction project that we see out there, as well as construct the Community Center. So, that's another goal, that's another source of funds that we need to talk about, and how we're going to accomplish paying for those long-term assets. And we will continue to improve the five-year plan for the general fund, as well as the capital fund. And this is just an invitation. So far, I've said this, I think, basically for the last three years, and no one's just been beating down our door to come and attend the meetings, but after tonight, maybe they will, this has been a lively conversation.
We're working on it.
And Park and Recs, we do work together on that. But anyway, other than the general invitation, do you have questions or anything that you want to go over?
Nothing specific from me, I just want to commend the Ways and Means Committee for all the effort and the amount of detail and the amount of scrutiny that goes into doing all that work, so thank you very much, it's a great job.
At one point, a number of you might be interested in, is the Ways and Means Committee has been in place now for over 10 years, so. Any questions from Ms., for Ms. Bray, Ways and Means, anything? Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brenda.
You're all welcome to stay, is that the end of the presentations?
That's it.
I think so. After, after tonight's meeting, regular meeting, the Board is going to meet an executive session briefly to discuss the police contract.
We will not be making any decision publicly, though.
We will only be discussing, so we're going to adjourn directly after our meeting tonight. We're next meeting on Tuesday, March 19th at 7:00. Daylight savings time begins on March 10th, at Sunday, so you have to set your clocks ahead one hour, we lose-
Love that hat.
We lose an hour. New for 2019, Doylestown Township Park and Rec is running a bus trip to the 9/11 Museum and Memorial in New York City, and that's going to happen on Friday, April 26. Doylestown Township Park and Rec, in partnership with Premier World Discovery, is offering a trip in 2019 to roam and the country roads of Tuscany, so contact the administrative offices for that. The Environmental Advisory Council's going to host a Pennsylvania Lyme Prevention Program, that seminar will be held at Delaware Valley University on April 3rd at 7:00 PM. And movie and ski tickets are available, and if you've got potholes, don't call the Township, call State Roads, 1-800-FIX-ROADS. And for township roads, yes, you can look on the township website to determine what a township road is, and if you have a township road pothole, you can call the township office at 348-9915. Okay, next item on the agenda, approve of the minutes for the February 19th, 2019 regular meeting of the Board. Everyone had a chance to review these minutes?
Yes.
Any questions, changes, corrections?
Motion to approve the minute?
Excellent. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda, no correspondences, we're moving on to reports, solicitor?
I have correspondence, if you-
It says not, not available, but was not-
Are we going to do that in your-
Yeah, I'm going to go down to Michael, sorry.
We talked about the vertical bridge appeal from the decision of the zoning hearing board at the last meeting. They've now filed an action in federal court alleging that the Township Zoning Hearing Board violated the FCC requirements, otherwise impeded the ability to provide service. We have forwarded that complaint to our insurance carrier, who will be now assuming the responsibility of defending the Township Zoning Hearing Board before the federal courts and in the, in Doylestown. I suspect that the federal court action will take precedence, so they will be involved in that, but I will be monitoring and let you know what's happening. It's not an unusual tactic, they did the same thing when, when the borough was having difficulty with Crown Castle, if you remember, so- Yes, I do. Stay tuned, and we will watch carefully, we'll let you know as things develop.
Thank you. And challenging, there was no business for an engineer tonight, sir, he's not here. Chief?
I have nothing to report.
Director of Operations?
I have nothing.
Ooh, boy. Manager?
I have nothing that we won't discuss later.
Okay, Jen, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Supervisors, Ken, anything further?
Yes, just wanted to update everybody, if you remember, we started, we did the communication survey, and we didn't get a very large response to that, so we said our next step was to have a focus group, and we had invited like 11 people, but only six showed up. And so, we were concerned that it, we may not get enough feedback. Well, it started at 7:00, and we had to cut it off at 8:30. It was excellent feedback, Stephanie was there, along with Judy and Andrea, so we, we got really good stuff, and we're going to plan to meet next week, just to kind of figure out what our next steps are, so it was just more of letting you know that we're still progressing on this.
Excellent.
And why this might help, because while we do an excellent job of pushing information out, and all the medias that we, that we use, based on the information we've received so far, is that not a lot of people read it. And working on this particular issue is, how do we draw attention, to your point about the pension, how do we use this and learn to say, we're going to send a message out about pension, what is the right way, and how do we, you know, what does it look like? What are the words? So, we're, it's an interesting timing that it all came together at this point, so.
Yep, okay, good.
Yes.
It's all done.
And just one point that I think we found, all found really interesting, was how many of the people who participated didn't really know the separation between Doylestown Township and Doylestown Borough, sort of where they are, so that's, that's something, you know, we definitely need to work on more.
Yeah. That's right, it's been going on for 100 years.
Yeah, it's been going on longer than that, and, you know, they've kind of learned it in school, and they forget, I guess.
That's it, for me.
Thank you. Look, Amy.
Yes, I have two committee meetings, the DTMA, the Knoll Property, which you're familiar with, I hope, on 202, right across from the college. We've got an agreement with them, it's signed, sealed, and delivered, and we'll be providing, or will start to provide, by putting in a water main in March to that development. If you're familiar with it, behind that is hidden meadows, where there's water, we're just extending it down all throughout that Knoll property area, so that'll give us the flexibility, one, to take care of service Knoll property, which I think it's 149, don't quote me, condos and some office buildings, so this is a big move for Doylestown Township.
You might mention that that's in New Britton Borough, so that people know.
It's in New Britton Borough, but DTMA services Plumstead, Buckingham, we service other areas and not just Doylestown. Also, Metro Storage, we're going to be servicing water there, hopefully in the spring, that's on 611 South, the Metro Storage, so that's another opportunity, where we're moving the pipeline along into Doylestown and other communities.
And they also did it for Tabor, right, or in the process of?
In, yes, that's a good point, we did, we did move it into Phase 1 of Tabor, which is, you know, everybody knows the Tabor Homes, I assume. And now, the next phase, Phase 2, which will be part of my Planning Commission comment, is starting to, to grow, get the plans going, et cetera, to the upper part of it, across from the Commerce Center, which is across the other side of the street, running pipe up there, and also to service some residents in that area, so DTMA is getting a lot of pipe extensions, and we're going to get good quality water to many of our residents, which is a good thing, obviously. Some of the wells have had trouble over the years, so it's just progressing, moving Doylestown into the next phase of growing. The other committee I had a meeting was the Planning Commission. After the, if you remember, after the presentation by Grasso a couple of months ago, the Planning Commission, through Stephanie's guidance, threw down what they're going to present. They came in and did a, did a presentation, it's still very lacking, everybody, the same day we had Tabor, the same night, and in deference, if you will, to Charles Dickens, it was, I mean, a tale of two cities, it was a tale of two developers, so we're, and it was the best of times, and it was the worst of times. We, Grasso will be coming back again, and I think more than one more time, to hopefully understand what we're looking for, and work together to get that project moving along. The second half of that was Tabor Homes, and as I said, it was a tale of two, here the developer's sitting there, working with us, saying, yeah, I can do that, let's do this, that's a good idea, and, and we accomplished a lot in that hour, and I don't think we accomplished much at all in the first hour. Hopefully, I'll be proving wrong. So, those two projects are moving along, and hopefully, we'll get, get those up in front of this board some time this year.
Thank you, anything else, Rick?
No.
All right, Stephanie shared with me, and I think I stole her thunder, a correspondence from Barry Besler, who is Director of Policy and Compliance at Philadelphia Parks and Recreation, that Doylestown Township Park, Central Park, was selected to win the state award, Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society Award, for the Green Sustainable Park. It's a big award, it's like the equivalent to a PISAT's award we got for our parks, so congratulations to our parks, our park board. That award will be given out on April 4th at the PRPC Society banquet, Pennsylvania Parks and Recreation Society, on April 4th, out in State College. Karen will be gone, that will require an overnight stay, but I'm also, well, we're extending the invitation to any park members, park board members who would want to go, or any other supervisors who would want to go to attend this award ceremony, it's an auspicious award, so congratulations to our parks. It's an auspicious award, so congratulations to our parks, you know, director, and also to the park board.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's great. It doesn't, in the memo, and maybe someone can clarify, why did we win the award? I'd like to understand what made our parks stand out.
Okay, well, I don't have it here, but yes, the application is available.
Oh, okay.
And I'll make sure that we get it for the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
Especially since the park people will be here.
Right.
Why, why are Park won?
Exactly.[1690.73]